And female, there is no discrimination, there is no change whatsoever. You send us a resume, we're looking for somebody that on that resume tells us that I can be a city manager, I can do the job. That's what we're looking for.
You please?
Yes, there have been minority candidates placed here, sir.
Thank you.
How important do you think being bilingual is for the city manager or city support?
Actually, I know a few city managers who are bilingual. And I think, I think, I lived in the valley for a period of five years. I was not bilingual. I became almost bilingual during that time period out of necessity. I think in this environment, in Socorro, in the El Paso area, I think it would be a very high quality and one that would be very desirable to have a bilingual candidate.
I wanted to know what the subsequent work force for the cities a little bit. You don't have much information on the city, or you didn't have time to research any information on our city, so that was going to be my next question. I guess I'll get it this month. Thanks.
I have some questions for you. The first one is, based on what you know about Socorro, what type of city manager do you feel the city of Socorro needs? And we characterize into two different types, you know, they'll need both one or the other, obviously, like for both types. But one being a builder, someone who shows up aggressively and wants to build stuff and gets aggressive that way, or a maintainer, which is somebody who sees that we have some good things in place and just, you know, wants to build on that. So which one do you think the city of Socorro needs, a builder or a maintainer?
I think you're going to need a combination of the two. I don't think either one will specifically answer the questions that you're looking for. A younger city manager is going to be looking to try to move up the ladder. They're going to be wanting to build, they're going to want to accomplish things. At the same time, you're going to want somebody who can give you a level of stability, who has some background in management, in finance, in ability to manage the finances of the community, and to be able to accommodate construction and parks and quality of life issues that most cities are looking for. Certainly, an inexperienced manager, somebody who is fairly young and has limited amount of experience.
I'm sorry, can you turn that off, whatever that beep is?
It's inside.
No, it's inside, it's right there. Can you turn that off?
It's not. Can I be back here? Is it over here? I don't know.
I hear it right here. You want the stopwatch?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you sure it's not right there?
Yeah.
In the bag?
Everybody please stand.
Sorry about that.
I'm wrong. Going back, I think you're going to be looking for somebody who has some experience, who has a level of patience of dealing with the financial issues. All cities are facing these days. Economy's tight, cities are reluctant to raise taxes for quality of life issues, jobs are important, all of those things, and being a young manager, as I said, you want to make your mark and to improve and to show people what you can do. I think some manager with a little bit of experience and some know-how would perhaps best search you.
My second question is, what city has your company done a search for that best mirrors the city of Socorro? And what challenges did your company have to overcome in that city?
No, I cannot answer that question. The city, SDR has done approximately 300 searches over the last several years. And to say exactly where they have matched a candidate with a city of comparison to Socorro, I honestly can't tell you that. I do know that they have done statewide searches, so they've worked with a number of cities. I think the city of Kilgore, which is over in East Texas, they just recently completed a search over there, and the fellow started at work, has lost a lot of jobs, the industry there has been depleted in the last several years, and their economy is tough. And I think they've recently hired a manager there that appears to be a good match. In my history of the firm, I've known Mr. Hallfield for a number of years, and I have been on the other side of the fence of the manager, and haven't done a lot of work in recruiting other managers in that regard. But I do know that the firm has done a significant number of searches. One thing I would emphasize, you're getting three recruiters in this deal. I will be the person that you will see on a regular basis. Mr. Hallfield, who is the CEO, who's been doing this for 15 years, and Mr. Taylor, who's been on board a little over a year. We all collaborate on a regular basis about various issues with cities and what goes on. We had meetings this past Monday, and we discussed the various cities and these various searches that are going on within the organization. So there are three of us working on this up front in the management recruitment area, and you're not just given a name. So there's background and there's backup behind me that will be working with me to make sure that you get good candidates for the job.
Okay.
Of the background checks that you will do on the candidate, are they going to be extensive or just?
That's part of the fee. We will do the background search on them, that's criminal, we will look at their financial background, we will look at the whole thing, and that's part of the fee.
They're going to be extensive, right?
I'm sorry?
They're going to be thorough?
Yes.
How much involvement from the people in council or the constituents in our city will you permit while you're doing your research?
Ms. Rodriguez, I'm sorry, your voice is very soft and I'm a little bit hard to hear.
How much involvement from the people in council or from our constituents will you permit while you're doing your research?
We're going to be working with the council, I mean, we're going to be seeking your guidance on a regular basis. You're going to be, we're going to be calling you, we're going to be asking you questions, we're going to be providing you with correspondence and asking you to look at the profile of the candidates and provide us feedback on that. Now, up until the time that we actually present you candidates, your interaction with the candidates is going to be fairly limited. But then when we present you with candidates, then we'll be able to discuss those candidates with you at will. And you'll have my phone number, you'll have the firm's phone number.
Twenty-four seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it very much, and I...
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. I appreciate your time, look forward to working with you. And please, if you have any further questions, don't hesitate to call us, ask us, we'll be glad to get you the answer. Some of these questions you had tonight that I don't know the answer for, I will find those out, and if you're still interested, we'll be there by the back.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
I'm going to tell you I've been moved.
I'm sure.
I think so.
It's better.
Yeah. You can feel the warmth.
Are you still hearing? That was a horse.
There wasn't an alarm in that bag, there wasn't an alarm. And then they tried telling me, oh, we don't know what it is. It's right there.
But you know what, we didn't even use it, we would use this other one. I don't know why we didn't do it.
Yeah.
He wouldn't let it go.
Yes, ma'am.
And now it's weird over there in the back.
You know, the Sammons, you know, Sammons?
Some of those ghosts that he did in City Hall?
They set up the...
Because we didn't even use it.
Where are you playing, bro?
I went from Tulsa.
That's what I'm trying to hear, the guy.
Those kids are driving you crazy.
You know Jesse's telling you also, the hairman said, "Sorry, you're not going to El Paso right now." It's what they were just playing us on.
You're going to Oklahoma State?
Yeah.
I worked with him for five years.
Five years.
When Bob Morris, you know, in Oklahoma, you had to run for five years as chief operation director.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Is this the third game we're doing?
Wow. So that's great.
Yeah. Very good. Very good. You were great when you played in those spots. That's why we got the patch. I never got to see one of them again. Any other game.
Hello.
It was always so good.
Yeah.
I went down when we had a gala, and they played UG. And the first thing I got, when I got to Oklahoma City, the first thing I learned was that it's Texas, UG versus OKS, Oklahoma, OU versus UG. Oh, you know. So this is, you know, this is the first time in a number of years that state may really talk into OU. It's going to be interesting, but I'm afraid of it. If OU pulls it out, they will not, they, big ball, they'll win it because they'll be second. They'll be second, but if they get the big ball, probably get LSU.
I honestly think OU has a better chance of staying than either LSU or Alabama.
Just like Texas Tech, OU, yeah. But they're playing Utah, right? My son, who was in the sports city, can read college, he'd be the bigger of the thing. Yeah. Anyway.
I grew up feeling like my father was like...
For years, I was used to seeing you always. If he moved, I would definitely...
I don't know, I'm not very lenient. For the kids. You know, she was like, "You're a little..."
You know, she was like, "You're a little..."
You're a little...
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 So this is, you know, this is the first time in a number of years that state may really talk into OU. It's going to be interesting, but I'm afraid of it. If OU pulls it out, they will not, they, big ball, they'll win it because they'll be second. They'll be second, but if they get the big ball, probably get LSU.
I honestly think OU has a better chance of staying than either LSU or Alabama.
Just like Texas Tech, OU, yeah. But they're playing Utah, right? My son, who was in the sports city, can read college, he'd be the bigger of the thing. Yeah. Anyway.
I grew up feeling like my father was like...
For years, I was used to seeing you always. If he moved, I would definitely...
I don't know, I'm not very lenient. For the kids. You're a little... 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 You're a little...
Oh, thank you, you look nice too.
Oh, thank you.
I miss it a lot.
I miss it a lot.
I stay in cold weather, I would show you t-shirts, and that's what I used to do. You can only come in, it's just close to me. We're not going to do that.
I know that.
I appreciate you.
Ten percent certainty.
Come here for me, this is a big one. We were playing. He took a lot of heat over that.
He loves to...
Did you ever see that article that he was talking about?
No.
Never seen it. Really, it was just a... And it's a senior idiot.
He's a lawyer.
He's a lawyer. He's, you know, probably on the CIA. What?
He's a lawyer.
I think I remember him before, that was all that. I'm trying to remember. Yeah, they, well, they... I mean, what's the background of North Carolina or where they play? Do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Mayor, are we ready to go?
Yes, sir. Welcome to the... I hope you feel better. Thank you.
Mayor, council, this is the Mercer Group, they're represented, they're living it themselves in it, and give you their proposal.
Well, thank you.
I have some things in there for you that you can follow along.
Thank you.
I think I emailed you, right?
Yes.
I got two left. Wait, wait, wait. What's your... Thank you. My name is Gary Holland, and I represent the Mercer Group, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you this evening. I really appreciate the chance to talk about what the Mercer Group can do for the city of Socorro. As you well know, this is, this process that you're going to be undertaking to find city managers, probably one of the most important things that you'll do as a city council. It's the person that you're going to be looking to, to carry out the policy that you put in place, to enforce the ordinances that you pass, to make sure that the budget is administered properly, and a variety of other things. And so for that reason, this is one of the most critical decisions that you have as a city council. I have over 30 years' experience in local government, working both as, in city management for about 17 years, as well as working with a variety of cities and counties throughout Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, and Missouri. And I tell you that because that experience is going to mean something when it comes to the kinds of questions that will need to be asked, both of you, other staff with the city, as well as other people in the community that you may want me to talk with as we start this process. I know the questions to ask. The first thing that I will do in starting this process is to meet with each one of you and ask you questions about what you feel like are going to be the most important issues that your next city manager is going to have to deal with over, say, the first year, as well as over a longer period of time. These issues are going to be the cornerstone of the search process, because what we want to do is be able to match up the issues and the skills that you need here with those applications that I'm going to go about soliciting. Once we've gone through that process, I also want to meet with your staff and talk with them in detail about their operations. And one of the reasons that I like to do that is because any time you start talking with city manager candidates, they're going to be very interested to know what functions the city has, what some of the issues are at that operational level. I'm also going to work developing a community profile. This will be very important because the kinds of people that I'll be soliciting to apply for this job are going to be good enough that they're going to have other opportunities. And so what we want to do is showcase the community such that it's appealing to other, to candidates that may have other opportunities around the state or even around the country. Once I've completed this community profile, as well as the position profile, I'll provide this to you in draft form so that you'll have an opportunity to take a look at it. If there are things you want to add or change, whatever, we'll do that before I ever go about publicizing the position. Once we've completed that process, one of the most important things that I do is I have a targeted direct mail program where I'll create a four-color brochure that will have your community profile, as well as a position profile, and the kinds of capabilities that you want your manager to have. And I'll direct mail that to candidates that I feel like possibly match up with that skillset that we'll be looking for. I also have a system of contacts throughout the state of Texas, throughout the southwest region, and nationally, both in terms of, I have university contacts, LBJ, School of Public Administration, the MBA program from the University of Kansas, and a variety of other educational institutions, as well as councils of government, and quite frankly, city managers that we've placed around the state. And I'll talk with them about candidates that they feel like match up with the criteria that you and I have gone about creating. Once I've gone through that process, I'll also advertise, which is kind of a baseline set of activities that everybody will do. But I'll advertise in the ICMA newsletter, we'll put the information on our website, we'll advertise with various associations of city managers throughout this part of the country, as well as nationally. But the Mercer Group has associates like me all over the country, and so I'll have them as a resource that I can use to get leads on people that would match up with the kind of people that you're looking to recruit. At roughly 60 days, depending on how the holidays influence this whole process, but generally around 60 days, I'll have a very detailed report of eight to 10 candidates that I feel like match up with the kind of person that you're looking for. We'll get together and we'll just sit down and go over each one of those candidates and talk about them. And I'll have information laid out for you that matches up the kinds of skills that they have, the kinds of experience that they have, and how it matches up with the issues that you identified at the first of this process. You can see where they make sense for the city of Socorro. Once we've gone through that process, one of the things that I've found cities really like is to be able to see the people that I'm presenting to you on paper. And so what I'm able to do, I'm in a university community, and I'm about five minutes away from a facility where we can video record interviews with each of these people. And what I can do is, for those that you're particularly interested in, but you may not want to incur the expense of bringing all these people in to interview, I can interview those people in a video recorded way, provide a CD to you, and you can, either as a board or individually or both, you can see these interviews and see what kind of presentation style these individuals have, how articulate they are, and obviously, how they respond to questions relative to the issues that you have here in the city of Socorro. The goal at that point will be to fine tune the number of candidates down to three, four, possibly five. That'll all depend on you. But once we've gotten to the stage of bringing candidates in for a personal interview, I'll do a detailed background check on each of those candidates. Not only will it have information regarding criminal history, driving history, credit reports, verification of their education, and that kind of thing, but I'll also do detailed interviews with references that they provided, as well as other people that I've found, you know, through talking with references, I could then essentially expand on that and talk with other people. And what I like to do is, instead of just giving you a report that says, "Well, these references said that they were really good, and you might hire them," that's what references do, what I like to do is give you a narrative that gives you exactly what, how they respond to the specific questions, not just my, you know, generalized, you know, "They're really good people," but specific, you can read for yourself what their references had to say about them, you know, relevant to those issues that are important to you. I'll provide that to you in written form, and whenever we're at the stage of doing the interviews here in Socorro, I'll also provide an interview guide for you that will have suggested interview questions. You may have others that you want to add to that list, but these will be questions that will help you spur your thinking about the kinds of things you want to ask the candidates. And I'll also provide a rating form for you that will allow you to kind of keep track of how you feel about each candidate as you interview them. Once you've decided on a top candidate, I can be available to help you with the contract negotiations if you want. Some cities like that, some cities would rather do it internally, but it sometimes is helpful if you have somebody that can mediate that process for contract terms so that, you know, if there are any sticking points, I can kind of soften it a little bit. I'm not going to do the negotiation, but I can at least present what you want to offer as an objective third party. The Mercer Group, as I mentioned, we are a national firm, we have associates throughout the country. The organization was begun in 1981. Joe Mercer still is president of the company, and he and a variety of other associates in the Mercer Group will be available to me to help with this process. One of the things that we have in our proposal that I've been asked about in other cities, there's an alignment I have in there where it indicates that we very rarely, if ever, say no to a client. And people have asked, "Well, what do you mean by that? We never say no." Well, what we mean by that is that we don't want this to be the last project we ever do. We want you to be proud that you use the Mercer Group, and if anybody calls you later to find out how the process went, we want you to say good things about us. And by virtue of that, if there are things that you want us to do that aren't necessarily in the contract or aren't necessarily in the proposal, we'll do everything we can to meet those needs. There may be a special situation come up that you want me to handle, I'll do everything I can to take care of that. If you need me out here for a meeting, you know, the next day, I'll be here if at all possible. So that's what it means by "we never say no." With that, I'm open to questions.
I have three questions for you. I believe that there's personality traits in candidates, that there's builders and maintainers. Builders, I see as aggressive, get here, they want to build stuff, they want to, you know, it's more of an aggressive personality. Maintainer, one gets here, sees that we have good things here, and just tries to add on what's already here. Based on those two specific characteristics, and having to pick one, what do you feel best suits the city of Socorro from what you know, a builder or a maintainer?
Well, quite honestly, that's your call. One of the first, as I mentioned, one of the first... One of the first, as I mentioned, one of the first things that I'll do is I'll interview each one of you. And those are the kinds of things that we'll talk about. Because what I wanna do is recruit candidates that you want. I wanna recruit candidates that you feel like meet your needs. So if you're looking for somebody that's aggressive, that is gonna get out front and lead the charge, that's the person that I'll look for. If you want somebody that is somewhat of a laid-back personality, that is more interested in being behind the scenes as a facilitator, again, you know, if that's what you want, that's the kind of person that I'll look for.
The second question is, what city has your company done a search for that best mirrors the city of Socorro? And what challenge did you have to overcome from that city?
Well, they didn't have a lot of Spanish speakers, but the city of Canadian comes to mind. It was a relatively small community. And they were concerned that they wouldn't be able to generate a lot of interest in the city. But what I like to do is in putting together that community profile, and I don't mean that you just put everything out that everything's wonderful, you know, and that there are rainbows every day. But you have to be honest about the community. But whenever I showcase the community, you have to emphasize what the opportunities are for a city manager to come here. And that was the situation that I had in Canadian. They really weren't convinced that they had a lot to offer, and I felt like they did. But you know, you just have to know what to look for. Things that you go by drive-by every day and you don't think about. Well, I've got fresh eyes on the subject and I can see some of those things that city managers will be interested in knowing about.
And the last question is, sometimes you can easily find news articles that are less favorable about a candidate through the internets. Will you screen those applicants out in the process?
Well, it's a great tool to begin to start asking questions. I won't immediately rule candidates out if there happens to be something on the internet, especially blogs. As you well know, bloggers are anonymous and people say things anonymously that they may not say if their name is attached. But I think the answer to that question is that that's one of the things that I will do. And if I find out that there are things going on that need more research, then I'll do more research. I won't immediately rule people out though, just because of that.
You were talking about selling our city. Did you have time to research the city of Socorro before you came today?
Not a great deal, but Manny was concerned. He told me that I would find, you know, some negative things. But that's, you know, that's going to happen.
Suppose you did, suppose we did sell it to you, would you do extensive research on the city itself?
Absolutely. What I would like to do is, as I mentioned earlier, I'd like to be able to interview as many key staff as I could and talk about with them about the operational issues that they face. And also if there are some individuals in the community that you feel like would be good to talk with in a general way, I'd like to do that as well. But I'll also do a lot of my own research on, and essentially that community profile that I was talking about. I will put together a lot of information that any candidate will be able to learn quite a bit about the city just by reading that.
I have another question. How important do you think being bilingual for us, the manager, would be?
Here, I think it would probably be very easy. I do, and I happen to know that I think around eighty or eighty-five percent of your population is Hispanic, so, you know, I would think that that would be critical.
That's all I have, thank you.
I noticed that one of your first appointees or candidates was in nineteen seventy-three.
Well, that wasn't me.
Somebody did, right? So, in sacred existence in nineteen eighty-one?
Yeah, Jim Mercer, actually Jim Mercer and I have known each other since the late seventies. I think some of those things that you're seeing in there as far as like nineteen seventy-three, he was the program director for the, what was called the Urban Technology System at Public Technology Incorporated. Public Technology Incorporated was a branch of the International City Managers Association. And I actually worked with PTI for several years and that's how Jim and I got to know each other. He actually placed technology agents in cities around the country and those are the ones that you're seeing there in nineteen seventy-three.
Well, you had a part of the, I can't remember if it was about three hundred or thirty-six, but I don't know. That's a substantial amount. One of the appointees or the candidates that supported in El Paso, the city of El Paso?
Correct, yeah, Jim Mercer did that work.
And that appointee is still there?
Yes.
Okay, the other issue or the other question I had had something to do with, Mrs. Garcia asked what you know about Socorro. Obviously you say you do research of that much, but do you know about the political climate here in Socorro? Do you think that will have an effect on finding the right candidate for the city?
Well, I think that finding the right candidate will require that they be told, you know, what the issues are as far as the political controversies and so forth that have occurred. There are professionals in the field that like that kind of environment. I've had other search projects where there were problems that were pretty high-profile. And I found a number of individuals that wanted to work in those kinds of situations. There are others that don't. But, you know, it's a matter of not keeping anything under wraps. You have to talk about these things in a truthful way. But quite honestly, there are people that will be attracted to a situation like this. They're called turnaround managers in some service. So, you know, it's something that has to be addressed, but it's not something that's insurmountable in terms of finding qualified people.
As far as the criminal checks for the candidates, anybody that applies, why don't they have just a minor complaint in the police department? Then also counting against the candidate? But it has to be a major thing?
Well, when you say minor, you're talking, if the candidate, any of the candidates that I do those background checks on has a criminal history, felonies, you aren't gonna see them. But I will do those checks. And the candidates that I present to you, you can rest assured that they don't have a criminal background.
No complaints of any kind, nothing?
Well, I mean, driving, you know, if they have traffic tickets or whatever, that's not gonna show up until it. But I will do those criminal background checks. And if they have a felony, you aren't gonna see them. It's just not worth the risk.
Another thing from the city. How much involvement from the people in the community or from the city council members will you commit to for your initiative?
Well, the, on the front end, whenever we meet individually and talk about what you feel like are the critical issues, that's gonna be a fairly intensive process. I would like to spend a lot of time with each one of them. If you're interested in, and also I'd like to talk to community leaders that you might recommend about the kind of city management that you feel like would be successful here. Whenever we get to the point of the interview process, if you feel like it would be helpful to have, say, a citizens committee, I could work with you to put that together as a part of the interview process. You could go from just maybe having this informal social opportunity for the candidates to meet with people in the community, all the way up to having them a part of the interview process where in addition to interviewing with you, they could have an interview with that set of people as well. But once again, those are things that I'll be looking to you for direction on. This is your, this is your process. And what I wanna do is, I wanna do the things that you feel like are gonna be most helpful in getting the best candidates.
And you say that it will probably take me sixty days or less?
It'll be, I can control the first sixty days pretty closely. But once we get together and talk about that list of eight to ten candidates, then it's not, usually it takes another thirty days to go through the interview process and come to terms with, you know, with your top candidate. But that last thirty days, it's all a matter of everybody's schedules. You know, you may have to move it back a week because you can't get everybody together, you know, certain days. Sixty days to have that eight to ten list of candidates and then another roughly thirty, thirty to finish it out.
I didn't get the fee.
I'm sorry.
Did you have a fee in here? I didn't see it.
It's in the proposal. I'm glad you asked about that though. Well, what I typically do, as far as the fee, it's a fixed fee. We don't charge a percentage of the salary or anything like that. But what I also do is I put in an expense budget that pays for the brochure and ads and travel, you know, those kinds of things. And I usually put seven or eight thousand dollars in the budget, but that's a not-to-exceed budget. Most of the projects I do come in around forty-five, nine dollars. So I hope to keep that in mind whenever you think about the fee. Because the reason I put a little more in that expense budget is that if you have things that you want me to do that come up later that we hadn't anticipated, then I'll have the ability to go ahead and take care of those.
Yes, Gary, you're experienced with, if city council identifies a couple outstanding candidates, is there a benefit to visiting the local community in which they work in current?
That's one of the things that I'm available to do if the council wants. I can, the answer to your question is yes. You know, I can arrange interviews with people that they've worked with, people that report to them, and also talk with people in the community face to face, so.
Say a couple of council members want to be involved in that?
If they wanna go, they can go.
Want them to know that they have to open it up?
Oh, absolutely. You guys, like I say, this is your process. If you decide that you wanna do some things, then, you know, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Having motion?
I'll take it. Also, we're in regular agenda, so we can already hear. Just because the audience is empty doesn't mean you're right.
We're in regular opening dinner right now.
So that was the fun part, now we have to actually figure out which candidate we prefer amongst the city council.
That's correct.
How about giving us your opinion?
I want Mr. Soto's opinion.
No, I'm gonna hear what Mr. Soto has to say, he's got a lot of experience with this.
Well, let's hear it.
I'll just start first.
Okay.
I'm like the first.
I like Donald Morris, the consulting group. The research is safe. Neither will the other two be. Neither of us, we asked people where people was at. I like this gentleman because he also, I think it was Mr. Moore, was that his name?
Roarke, yeah, Roarke, like a R.
I liked him because he also gave his opinion on what he saw in the city during his tour and he also had good things to say about it. He was opinionated and I like that, he had input. And I like him, I think I might go with him.
Well, he took all my speech. I like him too. He did research of the city, had some information about the city. He knew about the political climate. He made a comparison to another city that was more or less about the same size, same type of environment, you know, same, Marana Sanrio, the desert area was also. And he, he did the moment, he would answer really quickly, thought about it, he knew what he answered. That's what I liked about it, he was very, very careful with what he said to make sure that it's right. He answered the question on Moore's side. Which the second gentleman, he kinda got a little luster. But anyhow, this gentleman would be water-sprinkled, I think, I'd like.
I took notes and you all just took all the reasons, you know, you're right, the guy was opinionated. We asked about the, when I asked about the builder or maintainer, I said you need a builder, because when I came down here, I saw some of your facilities. And the Mercer Group, when I asked them, he gave a politically correct answer, which is your decision. But I think I liked the opinionated one, the one who's gonna, you know, this is our first city manager search. They're supposed to have had thirty, forty, you know, and then they're felt, so we do look to them for guidance. then they're felt, so we do look for guidance of, you know, you know, some guidance, not all of it, but for some. You said, you already said, Mr. Madrid, also about the Arizona, like I read away, around Arizona, you know, climate, atmosphere, you know, the Mercer Group, and I guess I picked up on you all as far as, except for Waters Consulting, Obeels did other research. You know, Mercer Group said we're eighty-five percent Hispanic, we're not, we're ninety-seven percent Hispanic. There's a big difference between eighty-five and ninety-seven percent. You know, in the, in the information brochure for the Mercer Group, on the second page in big bold letters, it says, "The Mercer Group process will showcase the coral assets." You know, so, and because they're so close in their credentials, these little things are the typical, so you all are in agreement, I like Waters. I did like how he said, if, if, if there's, if there's bad media out there on the individual, I'm going to ask him, and his words were, so that he doesn't get hit for erroneous reporting. Man, we deal with erroneous reporting all the time here in Socorro, so we get, but I liked it, that he recognizes that media does the erroneous wrong. Okay, so, Laurie?
You know what I'm going to say, I like all of them, but they all had good points and, you know, they all, they all hit.
But if you actually.
But I have to pick one, I guess I'm, even though I like some of the things in the other places.
Which one? Okay, so, do we just make the motion again? I move to select. I move to select Waters Consulting as the executive search consultant for the city of Socorro, and should approve the proposal and be set forward in the firm's proposal.
A motion on the floor by Jesse Gardner, seconded by Mary Garcia, to select Waters Consulting Group.